Town administrators recommend you to accept the gift. Kristin, do you want to come up?
So we were very fortunate this year to receive a donation. Friends had actually bought this TV as well. So now they outfitted our other room with a 58-inch Mark TV, which is allowing for much better viewing than the 30-inch TV that we had in there previously. They have been hosting for about two years now, a month-long movie day. It's evolved and it's mostly newer movies, which is what this rooming, 20 or 30 people a month, to come watch the movie, bring their lunch, bring their popcorn, and really enjoy just being together. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Barbara.
Hi, Barbara Boglin and Maureen Capenow and I, Barbara Spire, representing the board members of the Friends of Frodenham Hall Incorporated, humbly accept our thanks, the thanks of the board of selectmen for our gift of the TV. It's for the use of all who come to Frodenham Hall and, as you said, for the use for our movie of the month that's presented by the Friends of Frodenham. The goals that we have are to raise and disperse funds in support of the preservation, renovation, and maintenance of Frodenham Hall and for the support of projects, events, programs, and special activities organized and operated by the Easton Recreation Commission, the Council on APT, and Bethune Services. And they are to benefit all the residents of the town of Easton. And what I'd like to do is say that we appreciate Kristin Kennedy's persistence in helping us to obtain a sign for the Frodenham Hall and for all the renovations and improvements to this historic building under her leadership. Hopefully, our bridge side will be replaced shortly. And we value her suggestion on ways that we can better realize the goals of the Friends of Frodenham. So thank you. That's all I'd like to say.
Barbara, thank you very much for your kind contribution.
You're very welcome.
Can I have a motion to accept the donation of the Frodenham Memorial Hall to Memorial Hall?
Move.
Second. All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Barbara, thank you, and Kristin, thank you.
A second memo from Kristin Kennedy, Director of Health and Community Services, requesting that the board accept a $5,000 donation on behalf of the Easton Charitable Trust to the Easton Veterans Services Officer. Easton veterans were chosen as a beneficiary of the 2018 Festival of Trees. The donation will be deposited to the Veterans Programming and Outreach Fund. The town administrators recommending that we vote to accept this. Kristin, do you want to come up again?
Actually, I'm very cordial.
Are you being cordial then? Okay.
Hello, I'm Corey Elman, the Veterans Service Officer. Just very grateful to be a recipient from the Easton Charitable Trust. I was fortunate enough to be invited last April to tell a little bit about what I do and what I plan to do at that time. And I was chosen as a beneficiary to their Festival of Trees that they hold every year at the Easton Country Club. So I will introduce Kathy Esty and she can tell you a little bit more about that.
Thank you. So real quick, I am Kathy Esty, one of the five directors of Easton Charitable Trust, which runs the Festival of Trees here at the Country Club. And we have chosen a handful of lead beneficiaries to give the best seats to. So last year, we were trying to find something to do for the vets. And we found Cory, we thought that was a great man, and he's got some great ideas. But the team was very fun, so we're more than happy to be able to do this. And right now, we are currently in our application time for 2019 beneficiaries as well.
Kathy, that's fantastic, and we thank you very much for that.
Our pleasure.
We happen to feel the same way you do about Cory.
Yes.
Very impressed, so thank you very much for that.
Yes, our pleasure.
Can I have a motion to... Any questions from the board? I'm sorry.
Just a statement of support. We know the great effort that Cory puts in, and Kristin as well. It's not surprising to see the community rally around these great causes and efforts that these folks put forth. So thank you so much for your support. It goes a long way, and it matters not just in money, but the effort, I think, that it shows. We really care about a lot of people that could use these services and might have no other place to go. So it's really impactful to the community and to the community. So thank you very much.
Can I have a motion to accept the donation?
Move.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Next on the agenda is a refining and packaging memo submitted by Fire Chief Kevin Parker, requesting that the board accept a $1,000 grant awarded on behalf of the Easton Lions Club to the Easton Community Emergency Response Team, CERT, for the purchase of radio equipment, consisting of 10 Motorola Talk About radio packs for use at Easton's shelter, providing acute patient safety for members. The town administrators are recommending that we accept the grant. Do you have a fire department here?
I'll make a motion to accept the gift from the Easton Lions Club to the Easton Community Emergency Response Team in the amount of $1,000.
Just a question of information. What is the Easton shelter?
So that's referring to when the CERT team works with fire department in a city where they stand up in various shelters. So they would use schools for heating shelters of that nature. They would extend power out of just like what we had in 2018. We lost everything, we had 4% of our lost power for a period of days and times. These would be areas that go with the CERT team, which are a group of citizens of all degrees, we call the fire department, and staff those 24 hours.
Blood and emergencies. Okay, thank you. So... Second in, second in. All in favor? Unanimous. I think it was the Lions Club. Now we're going to move, we're going to begin the resignation of the disabilities group? We're going to split back number one?
I would ask that you have a little more.
Okay, all right, so. We have a memo submitted by Town Clerk Danielle Siccard. In the case that Timothy Garner recently resigned from the Commission on Disabilities, will be advertising for a term, a term which expires on June 30th, 2019.
Sorry, I didn't realize you had a little cabinet. I forgot the last sentence asking for a motion from the board to accept that resignation.
And that will be by... And then voting to accept Mr. Garner's resignation with regret?
Second that?
So David, you want to go? Role call? It's a role call. Okay, you're done.
We saw it, Connor.
Margaret Connor. And thanks to the service to the team. Next on the agenda is Budget Subcommittee Presentation, the town of Easton Budget Review.
Excellent. You're sorry? So much with that, I'd like to invite Jackie Weissman and Jen Stacey. We're also in the Budget Subcommittee. They're going to assist with the presentation. If you'd most of the heavy weight. But thank you again. Jackie, can you all say? Excellent. First off, I'd like to, as the Chair of the Budget Subcommittee, thank everybody on this board and everybody in the room to give us this opportunity for the Budget Subcommittee to present and fulfill its chartered obligation in this public forum. Our Subcommittee is comprised of eight members. It's a great collaborative group, representing across functional departments of the community. Two school committee members, two finance committee members, two from the Board of Selectmen, the town administrator and the superintendent of schools, and also Wendy, and much help from the school side as well. So thank you to the team for all the efforts they've put in. As established by town bylaw, the Subcommittee's objective is to develop short and long-range forecasts for revenues, expenditures, and develop strategies for meeting any projected shortfalls, looking at opportunities and risks further out, if you will. Our role is advisory in nature, but through a collaborative cooperative process, our members seek to gain consensus on what we see in terms of forecasts in the future, strategies, and will advocate for agreement with our respective boards and committees. And quite frankly, being here in such a public way with so many members present from the school committee, the finance committee, and clearly the board, is helpful in driving our points across. Our objective today is to provide an understanding of longer-term financial considerations that can serve as a backdrop as we will be going through our fiscal year 2020 budgets. So this group isn't here to talk about what the this year's budgets will be. We have some very talented people, Dr. Corral and certainly Connor, will walk us through from their perspectives. But our goal is to hopefully give the audience and the community at large a set of lenses with which to view this year's budget through so that it adds some context in terms of considerations for the years to come. So with that, I will pass it over to Jen, who will lead us through some of the Easton Town side and revenue side aspects.
Excellent. So thanks, Tom. My name is Jennifer Stacey, and I'm one of the members of Finance Committee and one of the representatives of the Finance Committee for certain purposes of the day. You know, getting a handle on where we're headed as a community in terms of financial planning is critically important, especially since many of the decisions and trade-offs we face today of a patient over future budget years. But it's up to me to work hard to get a handle on the past, present, and future of the town, state, and finances. I want to start the club for the summary of the reported financial condition, which is on the town website. It has been an awesome resource, and a lot of what I'm going to say is from there. So big props to the town for creating this awesome resource. We, when we talk about budgets, it's how we start revenue science since we are basing our growth on what we have, our revenues available. So not surprisingly, taxation is the supermajority of the town's revenue base. Per law, growth is limited to 2.5% plus new growth. Over the past several years, the town has aggressively been investing in infrastructure projects to support new growth, so there's opportunity there. This one makes me nervous. State aid is 17% of the town's revenue. As stated here, state aid was cut significantly in 2008 as a result of the recession. Prior to the recession, state aid was 23% of the town's revenue. So that's a huge difference over a period of 13 years. It took until fiscal year '16 to exceed its 2008 level. And had the state kept up with the pace from the pre-recession, we would have actually been at least have about $1.5 million more revenue. And the important point here is the reduction in state aid is that the town continues to need to respond to federal and state mandates that are unfunded. So we're continually asked to provide more services to meet certain needs or whatnot, not getting the dollars to meet that. So it's a real big crunch. What makes me personally nervous about this is that we had 13 years of a good market run, and we, you're hearing a lot in the news about kind of ups and downs. So I think this is an area, personally, I think this is an area where we're being cognizant of what could be on the horizon. It's a pretty kind of a slide, personally, I think. Local receipts are 10% of the town's revenue. They have been growing over the past few years, but as expected, they have started to level off. Another important factor to consider when looking at local receipts is the impact of big projects and how they can have a kind of single-year impact on local receipts and then later drop down. So we have to really look at that number carefully and consider paths and what it provides of and where it's headed. And lastly, the town has implemented practices that decrease reliance and reserve funds over the past several years, which has been a hugely awesome process as a measure to make sure we have funding for long-term planning. With that, though, we are about 5.6% of revenue, of the reserve account is at 5.6%. We look for a benchmark of around 10% as a goal of the general fund. So we're in the cause for concern arena on where we are with reserve funds. So again, we're using less of that when it comes to revenues, but that money is being put aside for longer-term planning, which is a very, very important practice when we think about state aid point of luck. So the takeaway here is the town is faced with real constraints and it's faced with trade-offs that impact us looking ahead. It's an area of opportunity, but it requires us to work as a community to ensure our values are reflected in how the town develops. Personally, we need to have a solid plan for potential drop in state aid. Next slide, please. So you'll hear details on expenditures are over today and Wednesday, so I won't go into the major details in the weeds here. Instead, we've taken more of a higher-level community comparison approach to explaining the expenditure piece. If you follow recent budgets of committee and finance committee meetings, we've seen a presentation of this also awesome report that's on the site called the Community Expenditure Comparison Report. And it allows us to have benchmarking data so we can compare Easton to our eight-year communities, which were identified through the operational audit, and our five neighboring communities. Some really interesting data comes out when we start looking at ourselves compared to others. And I think the important thing here too is to think of it not as apples-to-apples comparison. Every municipality is different, but it's also not apples-to-oranges. Think of it more as like Granny Smith to Gala. Like, we definitely have a lot of things we can pluck from this report in a way that may be new for us, which shows, look at it with a very careful lens and understand what we're looking at here. So up in the top left corner, we have, we are operating with $13.4 million less than our peer communities. So it's a pretty significant difference in the budget we're operating with. This is general fund budget compared to our peer communities. If you're dead luck, you're nine of nine, ninth of nine, rather. So it's, that metric by itself might not mean a lot because getting that's the apples-to-apples, oranges comparison, but when we break it down by per capita spend, what we start to see is we're actually 13% less than our peers as well. And that number continues to go down. So we were 9% in 2014, and now we're 13%. So that's a pretty significant amount of money we're spending, less per resident in town. And that translates to very strained resources. And I think what we'll hear from the departmental presentations over the next, today and Wednesday, is that how they're continuing to do a lot, that needs pushed to do more, but with less fewer resources, which is just not sustainable. Another interesting metric to think about is that if we increase our spending per capita, that would require us to have $5.4 million in our budget, which is a significant amount of money. So we have to have a discussion about what that means. The chart below, where the bar is going down, breaks out the peer comparison by different departments. So you can look at that and think of it as a dollars comparison. Education, for example, is 5%. Well, that translates to somewhere around $2 million that the schools need to meet their programmatic and other needs. So it's, you know, it's compared to other departments that have much smaller, you know, straight financial dollar needs, but their relative needs, in some cases, are extremely high. So again, driving home that point of doing a lot with fewer and fewer resources. So we've undergone an operational audit, we've implemented what we've implemented, but an important question that we need to consider is how much longer or harder we continue down this path of pushing for more with fewer dollars to meet those needs? Next slide, please. So the capital program needs are also significant across town. And then again, another area where the town and the departments are doing incredible job of, you know, working with what they have. If you've ever had a background, if you're at a personal level, your house or your car, if you choose to push off maintenance and push off getting your roof repaired, there are things that are going to happen. Your car might learn to problem and cost a lot of money. Your roof fleet might turn into water on walls. And these things happen when we start to push off preparing, repairing or replacing things and trying to get the Band-Aid approach through. And we're starting to see that, and it's just, it's a very scary prospect towards the horizon. So vehicle maintenance, for example, we have about $200,000 less than we should be spending for our aging fleet. I'm sure Dave will get into the average age of our fleet and what that means. But it's a very jarring thought when we think about snow removal or the needs of our, what our fleet is doing across town in terms of being serviced if it's in jeopardy of not being operated efficiently effectively. Pavement management is a really interesting one. We have $18 million of backlog repairs requiring $1.5 million annually to maintain. We have really hard winters in New England, so we need to tackle pavement issues, you know, consistently, as a constant process. What's really kind of scary and unsustainable is that we're currently borrowing $500,000 annually to meet just our annual maintenance needs, never mind the backlog repairs. So, you know, it's annoying, and we all crack jokes about potholes in Massachusetts, but this is actually a really real problem. And I'm sure almost everyone has been experiencing some situation where you hit a pothole and it's cost you money. I know I personally have. I know you're supposed to avoid them, but... And lastly, a really important project is the school, early elementary school project, which there's been a lot of press on in media. And I am by no means an expert, so I will not get into any pretty details, but from a strictly, you know, capital standpoint, what we're seeing here is that in 2014, $61 million were prepared, identified for the schools. for the schools, along with $21 million for town buildings. So again, thinking about what happens if you keep on pushing those things, you know, and down the road. With the recent elementary, early elementary project, we're seeing that a renovation and repair for the three schools would be $86.5 million. Now, what the, I think what the headlines often miss when you catch the paper is that there's a really important element here. So if we just repair and renovate the schools, we're not addressing programmatic needs, which are extremely important for the school. This school presentation will definitely get into programmatic needs in a way that I should not be. But, so not only do we need programmatic needs, but we're also getting a major reimbursement of, I think it's 50-some-odd percent of eligible expenses from MSBA. So when you read the headlines, just, you know, really try to take in all the numbers and understand what's at stake and how those pieces will beat that one out, because that $86.5 million for current renovation does not include any reimbursement, and it doesn't help us meet programmatic needs. So just driving home the point of all of this capital need that, you know, if we continue to keep the can down the road, we'll reel our head in uglier ways. So with that, I will turn it over to Jen Weisner.
If I could, those are all great points. Thank you, Jen. Just two points of clarification. The $1.9 or $2 million worth of funding that will be required to get the educational system not necessarily back in terms of programmatic needs, but equal to the average of the peers in the community comparison report. The other needs may be different that the school department may, or school committee may articulate. And then lastly, I believe the reimbursement rate on the early elementary school is south of 50%.
Okay. It's 52.26% of eligible costs.
Eligible.
So that could come out to about 44% of overall program costs?
Excellent. Thanks for clarifying that. I appreciate it. And sorry to jump in the middle.
No, the only other point that I should put before segue is that is, you know, the town actually has, if you look at the community comparison report, the financial condition report, also too, the town has done a really good job of managing that. Our per capita debt is around $1,600, which is very low compared to our peers and most of our neighbors. So, you know, we're not operating in a space where we're spending for whistling, and this is still a problem. Like, we're operating leanly and being very fiscally conscious and conservative, but if we don't start thinking about the trade-offs that come with that and, you know, what other we need to make, we're going to be in trouble.
Thanks, Jen.
Okay. Hi, I'm Jen Weisner. I'm a member of the school committee. Thank you for having me here tonight. I will be presenting two slides to highlight information that will be included in Dr. Cabral's budget presentation tonight. The first slide was some of our budget challenges. None of these are new. We've been talking about these for years. Our per pupil expenditure remains in the bottom 10% of the state. While it has increased slightly over the past couple of years, it is still lower than many of our comparison communities, and Dr. Cabral will present that information. We are seeing decreased funding sources at the state in February leveled by a significant amount, and that's not likely to turn around, it's likely to get worse. We are seeing increased social and emotional challenges in our students, which means more funding needs to be used for programs and personnel to address those challenges. Special education costs have been rising, and the primary school facilities are extensive, as you will know. And I just wanted to jump in a little bit about that $86 million. That's just for base repairs, base repairs. Fix the boiler, take out the asbestos, you know, whatever you have to bring up to code, nothing else. There are also impending new state mandates, for example, free full-day kindergarten. It is coming, we don't know when, but it will have a significant effect on our budget. And there are several other such mandates that we know are coming down the line, and we just don't know when that will date. These budget challenges have important long-term implications for our ability to provide a top-quality education for our students. And the next slide talks about some of the consequences. So less funding available for general education, what does that mean? It means limited growth of program offerings compared to other districts. It means increased challenges in meeting grade-level expectations, and it means we are unable to meet current and emerging technology needs. And as stated before, more funding will need to be diverted to repair aging buildings. Our concern is that our students could be disadvantaged compared to their peers in college admissions and success in the workforce. And Dr. Cabral will address many of these issues in her budget presentation tonight. Thank you, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you. So on behalf of the team, first of all, thank you both, and thanks to the team for putting in the effort. Although it's not a lot of slides, and it may not be a tremendous amount of data points, the team really poured through all of the available information that was at hand and tried to put a brief synopsis available for everybody in the community to understand as we go through what will be a review of this year's budget. But I hope what we've been able to create is a theme that demonstrates that, quite frankly, you regularly heard, this is nothing new. The first bullet point up there says that we continue to face a structural deficit. I've heard that for several years now, and my concern, or our concern, is that some of these times when we say it's nothing new, it becomes accepted and/or understood. But in many cases, and I thought Jen and Jen pointed out very well, that delaying some of these items that we have to address as a community is really increasing the expense levels that we're going to have to pay to address them at a later point. We talked about from a revenue side, when we looked at that objectively, we didn't find too many reasons to expect a material amount of growth. Quite frankly, state aid is challenged. New growth, we've been fortunate in recent years. I think it's important when we talk about new growth, we consider the impact of the sewer districts as we think of programs that can generate new growth and understand how we can engage on them if we happen to be on the finance committee, or on the board, or on the school committee, and helping educate the community about the importance of projects like that, and helping people to engage, creating a call to action. Local receipts, and we talked about school funding and how that has been cut, and we don't see it growing. As a matter of fact, back to state aid, I know that in items like, for example, when we look at the allocation, our charter school allocation is below the amount we're going to be assessed, so we're actually losing some funds from that perspective. And, you know, quite frankly, I think to Jen's point, we've been on an incredible run in terms of economic growth, not just in terms of the opportunities before Easton, but certainly from a regional and a national perspective, and so that's something to keep in mind. From an expense side, I believe the town, and when I say that, I believe that encompasses everybody in the town, the school committee, the town service side, admirably continues to budget expenses based upon the revenues available. And so we know we must balance the budget. It is a given thing, it is a fact that will happen, and if revenues are fixed, then the expenses must match it. And I know that we understand that, but that is a very powerful thing to say if the revenues don't change but the expense demands increase. And as a result, the revenues available, reducing spending in key expense categories such as insurance, energy, and wage growth, are hugely important, and I believe that the town and schools perform admirably there. But years of creative cuts, creative cuts and reorganizations seem to have resulted in expense levels which are, quite frankly, reactive in nature. And I believe you'll hear that word as we go through this year's budget. You've heard that word before. The longer we continue to say reactive, the more we are reacting, and I know that's a given. And it's harder and harder to address Easton's long-term capital needs, either programmatic or service level, investment needed for the longer-term success. I guess I will close with a couple other key points. First of all, we talked about the MSBA project here, you will hear a lot of it. I encourage you, if you have not gone to attend a listening session or engaged on that, that you should go, especially if you are a member either of the finance committee, of the board, certainly of the school committee. It is so critically important to helping us address our capital needs as a town, given the amount of state funding that may be made available to us via the MSBA process. I would encourage you to do that. I would encourage you to engage the friends and family and community members that you know to go. It is, in my opinion, the single largest financial opportunity that lies before the town to address some of its capital needs, especially specifically for these three early elementary schools. Lastly, in closing, one of the things that our team identified while we were sitting in the Colleen Corona conference room was on the wall is the proudly displayed 2011 Top 100 newspaper article. And we said as a team that, quite frankly, if you look since then and where we are now, we're moving away from that. We're getting farther away from being in the top 100. And we look forward to the opportunity to begin once again to move closer back to that. And I think that everybody in the town is proud of that, and I think that we all agree we want to work hard to get closer back to that. And with that, I'll just ask if there were any other comments I may have missed from my team members up here, or if we're good. Awesome. Well, thank you again to the board for this opportunity to present in the public forum, and thank you again to the team for all the effort they put into it.
Thanks, Jen. And thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
We're going to move right into the joint meeting, the finance committee, 2020 budget, so I invite the board of the deal and the board to bring up the page. [inaudible] Welcome to our friends on the finance committee. Thank you for attending. The first matter we're going to talk about is town administrators, FY20 budget change. How are...
Correct. If I may, just one technicality, Roberta, I ask that you officially open your joint hearing.
Welcome to the joint meeting, the finance committee, for the selectmen. The day is March 5th, 2019.
6:04. Thank you. So thank you to the Budget Subcommittee for the presentation on where the town is coming from as we look forward to fiscal '20 and where we're going. I just wanted to add quickly, before we get into the departmental budgets, I issued my first change memo for fiscal '20 budget last week that should have been distributed to the finance base select and press last week. The change memo summarizes some expenditure reductions that we have put in place since that preliminary budget, that reduce the preliminary projected deficit from 1.9 million to just over $1 million. We haven't touched the projected snow and ice deficit at this time. That budget is pretty close. Hopefully, that is $200,000 we can remove from this deficit, but we're not doing that just yet, only on the weather. And there's been a few departmental changes on the expense side that have brought that deficit from 1.9 down to 1 million. Those are the police department budget, there was a 38th officer request that has been removed, a request of the chief of police in light of the size of the budget deficit and the revenue challenges that we're talking about. He will speak to that in more detail on Wednesday night, ways before you vote for his budget. The Easton Public Schools, the 4% increase in the initial preliminary budget was a placeholder. We revised that to reflect a preliminary budget presentation by the schools. We'll hear more about that tonight. Southeastern Regional School Assessment, again, that was a placeholder based on recent years' increases we had seen. We revised that downward to match the increase they were actually requesting. Dr. Loebz will be here for Southeastern Regional Schools on Wednesday night to present that budget request. And finally, thankfully, we are looking at another advantageous year for employee health insurance benefits with the GIC. So board and finance committee may recall, the town decided to stay in the GIC for two additional years, fiscal '19 and '20, a couple of years ago. That has worked out relatively well on the premium expense side. That only went up by 1.01% going into fiscal '19. We're looking at an aggregate budget increase going to 20 of 1.28 compared to 5% that we were projecting. So that's a reduction of 300 to 2,000. So some positive movement there. We still have $1 million to go. And with that, we'll turn it over to the department heads to start reviewing their budget, unless anyone has any questions specifically about that change memo.
Okay. So first, the department is the Department of Assessors, Bob Alfred.
Good evening, everyone. The budget that has been submitted, any increases basically are contrashore. The salaries, the clothing allowance for the assistant, and the telephone, the cell phone reimbursement, and everything else. All the other expenses continue to stay the same.
And just for everyone's clarification, a hard copy of the assessors' budget is on page 15.
Does anybody have any questions for... Sami Hahn? Bob, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Next up is Information Technology.
Hi, everyone. Michael Tano, Information Systems Manager. Pretty much the budget's level funded from last year. There were a few little changes that they kind of balanced out, because last year we upgraded the, renewed the maintenance for the Sopos antivirus for three years, so we didn't have to pay that this coming year. This year, I did the maintenance for the equal logic arrays for two years, so we won't need that this coming year, like one year. So that was good to balance off of the E-fermenting, which went up a bit. The only other big news is that Dell Equal logic extended the, the lifespan for end-of-life is always six years for equipment, and I was looking at this year putting in for about 40,000 to 50,000 for two new arrays, which are six-year-old arrays that were bought in F514, but they just, a couple of weeks ago, changed that to 12-year end-of-life. So as long as we don't blow up the arrays with extra data, we've got a few more years for business.
So your total increase is 0.57%.
Roberta?
With as much activity around security and information systems, is our security program adequate, up to par, below par? I'd just like some insight.
We're in very good shape. The firewall is only a couple of years old. We have to upgrade the spam filter this coming summer because that's end-of-life. We also use carbon black lockdown software, which gets annoying to the users a lot, but if anything tries to run, the antivirus doesn't recognize the carbon black stuff. So, yeah, we're in very good shape.
Any questions from anyone else on finance or board?
Yes. Michael, you're the one full-time employee there, right?
Yeah.
What happens if, God forbid, you are out of work for a while? Is there some kind of networking going on in the office to carry on?
Dennis Kitzos, Officer Kitzos over at the police station, he used to be the IT manager of Holy High School. He knows where everything is on our network. He could, you know, he could fill in for me if there was an emergency. He has filled in for me at times when I'm on vacation. I also keep in touch with Terminal Exchange, who helped do the Hyper V upgrade a couple of years ago, so they have a good idea of where this one is built. So worst came to worst, Dennis wasn't available, we couldn't contact them. Thank you.
Mike, just want to give credit. I noticed in the commentary about the use of virtual machines and how it's an opportunity for us to control costs, so I just appreciate you thinking that way and helping us do that. I know it enables us to have some spend somewhere else that might be needed, so appreciate the thought.
It saved my life, too, because all that less hardware I don't have to take care of.
Right? Well said. Win-win.
All right.
Any other questions for Michael? Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Now, what pages in Inspector Services?
Fifty-four, five, and six.
There you go.
Fifty-four, five, and six.
I'm Mark Trivitt, Inspector of Buildings. And this budget process that I participated in will be, in fact, my last. I'm hoping that the operating budget and the capital budget that moves forward this year will give the department an opportunity to replace a couple of aging vehicles and an aging inspector of buildings. So this is a pretty straight forward, level-funded budget. The expense line items have not changed at all. There's a slight increase in payroll of the professional administrative group and one non-union personnel. It's all a result of that bargaining process. So I believe, last time I checked, it's just over $5,000, $5,300 roughly, of increase from the previous fiscal year. And I'm not sure how that will all shake out once I'm done. Be happy to answer any questions about personnel or the process.
To declare a happy retirement does not sound, to make it not sound so morbid, like a... Just to be clear.
I guess, Mark, question first of all, thank you and congratulations on the happy retirement. But on the aging vehicles, could you have just a little bit of context about the old R.A., the replacements, what would be better about that?
Yes. We have three vehicles in the department which are used on a daily basis. There's a 2005 Ford F-150, which is a Hemi down from DTW, with close to 100,000 miles and has some problems. We have a 2008 Ford Ranger, which has 90,000 miles and a very rusted-out frame. So if you look at that gray Ranger going down the road, it actually lists to the left, much like that cruise ship that was in front of us. And then we have a 2011 Ford Ranger, which has 40,000 miles. It's in much better shape. Of course, that's the one I've been driving. So we're hoping to replace perhaps one of those vehicles so that, you know, we have something else that's roadworthy.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
How many miles do you put on the vehicles on average per year?
I would, and I don't know exactly the number on this, but I would guess somewhere around 10,000, eight to 10,000 probably.
Per vehicle?
It's all, it's all short, short comps, short trips.
Okay.
We don't go out of state or anything like that.
Any other questions for Mark?
Real quickly, on replacing you when you begin your very happy, well-deserved retirement, the current budgeted amount is some of the standard correct amount. There's not going to be any issues with finding somebody at the rate that you currently have.
I mean, I would defer to the administration on that.
Yeah, we're programming what Mark's step would be with any leadership role. Obviously, there's a negotiation, but we're comfortable with the budget that is there. We don't think that that will be a problem.
Good. Thanks.
Mark, thank you for your service to the town at least. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Enjoy your retirement.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark. Daniel Sartar, it's your turn. Adam Clark.
Thank you.
Page 26.
Thanks for having me here tonight. I'm happy to kind of go through the variances from last year's, this current fiscal year's budget and match year's budget for you. The department head is a contractual operation. You'll see that there's a decrease in collective salaries as we kind of change in the assistant position from last year. There's also a decrease of about $1,000 in overtime line item. That's essentially from the November 2012 voting that we don't have for this year. There's also a $500 longevity decrease that, again, is associated with the assistant department position. There's a $100 increase in record line item. That's based on national law, Chapter 41, Section 19G, which sets the rate of $50, I'm making sure I say it correctly, $50 per thousand a week that we have. And so that's changed slightly. The poll worker's line item, you'll see a reduction of $8,250. I'll point out that it's important when you're looking at an election budget to know how many elections there are every year. So FY '13, FY '19 had three elections, and FY '20 will only have two elections. Those two elections will be the presidential primaries in March and the annual election. 2020 as a whole will be a very busy election year for us, but we'll see the other increases for the November election, presidential election, and the 2021 budget. In addition, the poll workers line, again, you're only seeing a decrease of $8,200 that will have an increase so that the election workers will be making minimum wage. We will be utilizing the election workers for additional support in the office to help with processing of census and dogs. That's the top portion of the budget. So looking at expense variances, the training budget, let's see that there's a $1,000 increase. That's there to send our records compliance manager to the National Association of Governmental Archives and Records Administrators Conference. He's been with us now for two years. We have a very new staff in the clerk's office. The thing is really important, both this line item and also further down in our memberships and travels and education that we provide them opportunities to understand their job better. So you'll see that in this line item is $1,000. And then further down, you'll see a travel $60 increase. That's again to send both the staff to mentoring sessions that are for clerks, clerk's office staff, and for colleagues. The telephone and communications is the increase of $260. That's in a contractual obligation. These are all minor, as you can see. $280 increase for the records management. Essentially, there's 13 billing cycles except for twelve that we're continuing to do for our shredded. And we're continuously working on our project in the attic and needing more archival boxes to assist in our project. You will see in line item for the town code expense, there is an increase of $2,300. As you know, we finished most of the phases of the town code. It's online. We're kind of operational. Our new, any new bylaws are posted on our new laws online. And every year or so, we need to supplement our bylaws. So you'll see the online code will have the past information on it. And on the left-hand side is where you can see new bylaws that have been approved at town meeting. A supplementation simply takes those new laws and puts them into the code so that it's active and that somebody viewing the code can see the code as it should be today. We did our first one this past year, and there was a $2,300 increase. So what I'm asking for here is exactly what it cost us to do the last supplement. And most of that is in regards to zoning bylaws. I haven't had any experience previously with budgeting for supplementing for zoning bylaws, only for general bylaws. And so we weren't very sure what that would cost us on any annual basis. And town meeting expenses, you'll see a decrease there as well. Again, you have less elections, and that's where the majority of that expense will be. We do have our maintenance fees for the pole pads that we're using at elections that do come into play, that weren't previously in other fiscal budgets. And the quoting works like we have for presidential planning as the town committees also on that balance. So I ran through that fast, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Danielle, the bottom line for your department is a decrease of 2.44%.
Yes.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions, comments?
I'd just like to make the observation that the early voting that was offered, I heard very loud and clear how successful it was. A lot of the people that I spoke with engaged on it, used it, took advantage of it, and it just went very smoothly, myself included. So, you know, I really appreciate the effort that the team put forth to make that run as well as it did and give the town at least that opportunity to do it. So appreciate it.
That is excellent.
There's a lot of work to be done.
I think so. I think there's very a lot to be done. You mentioned a project in the attic.
Yeah. So part of what we are in charge of in the office and Peter does as a records manager, is maintaining the attic in our archive boxes of records. Some of them are permanent records. Most of the permanent records are not stored in the attic, but ones that are, you know, our retention manual from the state could be anywhere from eight years that you're holding something or two years that you're required by law to maintain and keep those records. We've continuously are working towards kind of cleaning up the attic, making sure that the boxes up there are aligned with what the records retention manual says. And by doing that, we're not eliminating some boxes and we're having to need for additional boxes. So it's a continuous project that we're working on. I believe two years ago, it was 400 boxes that we were able to destroy.
Wow.
That doesn't happen on a yearly basis because we're trying to stay in order with all of the...
Appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments? Danielle, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And last, but certainly not very spooky, Mr. School. Rob? The school thing is included?
Are...
Just a bottom line number.
Bottom line.
Yes. I just closed my laptop. I'm sorry.
So I am Leech Cabrel, Superintendent of Schools, Karen Gordon, Director of Finance. This is ours, so we don't make a pocket for this meeting. It is literally a book. You can't see the current one on last year. Other than, different than other departments, we actually are voting on by the school committee before it goes to the town. And the school committee has not voted on our budget yet. That is next Thursday. So this Thursday, excuse me. So the budget will be available as soon as the school department votes on it. But I will share the standing points of view this evening, particularly the changes from last year to this year and the implications on the budget. And I will show you all the slides actually that I showed the school committee at the very thorough presentation. I will go through them a little bit faster, but by no means should you not stop me and ask a question if there's something you want to see in more detail. I will be showing you basically the bottom lines of everything. But again, please don't wait till the end of the presentation. I'm used to being a teacher. I'm used to having people ask in the middle of something. Please do that if you have any questions. I will start by saying that our process is also different than most departments. We have about 600 employees. We try to get as many of them involved as possible in the budget process because there are so many lenses with which we can view our business every day. And we want to make sure that we're providing the best possible education for our students, but also that we're doing it with fiscal responsibility. So we review our strategic plan, and we do a thorough data analysis at the district level. But then we push it out to faculty and staff. So we have our cabinet, which is made up mostly of our principals, assistant principals, and also our central office team. And every school had directed staff meetings where they discussed exactly what we needed going forward in terms of education for our children at each specific level and what they felt were areas that we could restructure or shift. It then came back to that cabinet level for review and recommendations. Once the school focuses on that particular school, it's very important that we bring it back and look at it from a pre-K through 12 perspective. Because what might have been a priority in one school or one grade band, for example, may be either a lower or higher priority when you look at it through the entire continuum of pre-K to 12. After we reallocated those priorities, we sent it back to faculty and staff for a full review. And then it came to the executive team, which is central office, where we review all of the data from a faculty view. We presented it to the Budget Subcommittee, and it's kind of been a show on the road since then. And we're here to share with you. I have, for a few years now, used these target definitions to define where we are shooting in terms of the budget for the school department. You can see the circles on the side represent growth from one another. So off of the scale is regressive. That means we're reducing or eliminating staff. We're going backwards. It's when we are not able to keep our core programs or we get, we're having to eliminate ancillary programs, extracurriculars, things of that nature. It is definitely sending the district backwards in terms of development and long-term strategy. The reactive or essential, which is just above it, that's providing staff and resources only as a reaction to a current need or mandate. It might not fully meet the need or mandate. It can be a partial list. It has in the last couple of years been a partial list. But it is a current need that we're trying to backfill. So it's already an issue for us. Moving up is proactive. That's when we're preparing for something that is an imminent or developing need or a mandate from the state or the Department of Education. Lack of preparation in these areas leads to reactive needs. Once something becomes mandated or becomes a deficiency with the district, it moves down into reactive category. Above that is strategic. This is the planning we do for challenging, the challenging, evolving needs of the future. We're trying to get our children ready, not for next year and not for the year after. Our focus right now is 2031, 2032. That's when our current elementary kindergarten students are going to be graduating from high school. And so with an eye towards strategic preparation, those are the resources and staffing that we feel we need to provide them with the education that other schools are currently receiving or are currently providing to their students. So our neighbor districts, many of them are incorporating a lot of the strategic planning elements that we are not currently at. And then innovative, again, is above the chart. That's what I strongly believe the capacities professionals, the districts professionals have the capacity and the capability and competency to provide to our children. That's developing cutting-edge, state-of-the-art opportunities and programming that prepares our students to be among the top thinkers and creators in the global society. So we pocket our needs in each of these categories. If you remember, last year, we were squarely in reactive or essential. We had some reactive needs that were addressing some state mandates, that were addressing some things that were lacking in our district. And we were able to fill each of them, the most critical ones, last year. This year, spoiler alert, before we get to the end of the presentation, I will tell you that we are reactive to regressive. So we have to add a couple of items to our budget, which I will explain, and I'll explain the reasons why. But in order to make that work to the point that it is right now, we are also in regressive. So we did have to make significant cuts to the operating budget this year. The next slides I'll share list some of those things. Again, I don't expect you to read or see everything on it. I'll break them out each separately and give you some highlights. Because we're in reactive or reactive and regressive, I will discuss the reactive elements. I'll just give you a quick example of proactive and a quick example of strategic. Because from a fiscal perspective, we just aren't there this year, and certainly not in innovative either. Before I do that, though, I just want to make the point that we are a very evolving, developing district at all times. We're working with children. We're working with humans who are very unique. We're working with children. We're working with humans who are very unique and have very unique and changing needs all the time. While we list certain things for the purposes of creating a budget and we actually assign figures to them, this budget is not going to be fully exhausted until almost two years from now, a year and a half from now. And there are changes that may happen that change our course because we don't have buffers or extras in the budget. So I just want to make that quantifying point before I begin because this will ultimately be available in writing. And while this is our best intention, anything could happen. A new mandate could happen sooner than we expected it. And so it goes from proactive to reactive right away. Student needs could develop. We could have a crisis that needs to be fixed in one of our buildings and so forth. So while we are assigning figures to them and certainly intend to move forward in that direction, there are always things that get in the way and we have to make sure we're providing the best for children's needs at any given moment. So these are all of the elements. Again, I won't go through all of them. What I'll do is break them out and reactive, of course, being the area I'll focus on. These first few, adjustment counselor, that is a trained mental health, social worker or mental health certified employee. Social emotional learning training and materials. Again, I'm saying that's reactive because there are also proactive approaches to that that this budget does not satisfy. That would be proactively offering therapeutic services before a child is in a critical need. This just addresses the professional development for educators to help children who are already exhibiting problems in the classroom. And then professional development in these critical areas.
Dr. Karam, you said to interrupt you.
Please.
Could you explain a little bit the difference between a child in crisis with a critical need? This would address versus a more proactive situation?
Sure. So we have wonderful relationships throughout the community with our community partners, whether that's at the police department, YMCA, and other services, social services, et cetera. We have liaisons in the department that consistently share information. If a student is in a crisis after school, for example, the school department lets us know so that the next day we can make sure that we're proactively reaching out to that child and their family for their needs. And the same thing the other way around. We'll let the YMCA know, for example, if there's a significant consideration. You can tell me to stop.
It's like the chain.
Um, sorry. So proactive would be reaching out, providing wraparound services to the family, wraparound services to the child, making sure they are getting counseling if necessary, making sure they're getting counseling in school by our mental health providers. Whereas reactive means the child is literally having a social emotional breakdown. They've been hospitalized for psychiatric needs and we are reacting it to try and get them acclimated back into the school. Are I make these three arrows meaningful? There is not a certain amount of hours or professionals that you need to have in the building. It really goes by the specific need for the child. I will say that we are understaffed in terms of our mental health professionals right now. We're solely reactive. Just to give you a sense of that, here are just some of the statistics from the district. 11% of all students on an IEP in the district qualify for emotional disability services. That's 76 of our youngsters. That's certainly a number that is unprecedented and it's growing. It's not just in Easton. This is a mental health crisis across the state and indeed across the country. 28% of our students who are outplaced are outplaced due to an emotional disability. That's 21 students. Outplaced is the absolute last resort for us. That means that we have determined we simply cannot educate that child either in our regular education classrooms or any of the special education services we have in school. We do not have the facilities to treat their level of need. And so they're either in a day program or they're in a full residential program. Those are what we talk about when we talk about OOD or out of district placements. They're extremely costly. One child can be in excess of $200, $250,000 if it's a day program because it does not include the transportation, which we're also responsible for providing. Again, where I say this is a regional issue, there are currently 19 hospitals that provide services to school-aged children across four states and we have difficulty sometimes facing students. We literally have had students need to go out of state because there is nothing in our proximal area that can serve them. We have had students sadly be in emergency rooms for psychiatric challenges for 36 to 48 hours because hospitals do not have room for them. All of our colleagues in other districts are expressing the same concern. Requests for tutoring, most of these due to psychiatric hospitalizations or confinement in the home due to significant anxiety depression. Two years ago, there were 35. Last year, there were 65. And this year, as of February, there were 33. So we're certainly on target to sadly meet at least last year, if not exceed it. And 19 students are either homeless in shelters through GCF or in foster care right now. All of these students, of course, require additional resources to help them be successful in the school setting, whether it's out of district or in school, and those are extremely costly. And so when we say a lot of our special education costs are increasing, certainly the mental health arena plays into that need. So those are three areas that we're looking to invest in the district in a reactive way to help us with some of these challenges. Then EL is an English language teacher. Point five means half-time. So 1.0 means a full-time person. Point five is a half-time person. Over the last several years, we've been trying to add point two, which is one day, point four, point six. We currently have three full-time people in the district and we are far below the recommended service delivery hours for children who have English as a second language. We have some children who are entering the district and don't speak any English at all. And there's a prescribed level depending on their level need. There is a prescribed number of hours that they should be seen and none of our students right now are making that benchmark. So we're looking, we need far more than point five, but we're looking to make incremental increases and that's why we feel it's a critical add for next year. Elementary science program, new standards came out in 2016 and we have yet to be able to purchase the materials that go with that. Those children are advancing every year without the resources that meet the current standards that students will be assessed upon once they reach high school for graduation. Just as an example, these are our ELA and math scores currently at grade 10. You can see Easton is second from the left and the state average is on the far right. Obviously, we expect to exceed the state, which we do. We're also at or above most of our cohort members. In science, while we aren't, while we still are performing well, we aren't performing as well as we are in math and ELA. Now, with that said, we also, our students take the physics exam in grade nine, whereas some students take the biology exam in grade 10. There are some apples and oranges there, if you will. However, we believe that our students should, we can be doing much better than this and that we can provide that. However, we can't guarantee that this is actually going to up, go up when we know that our elementary students are not working with the current Massachusetts Science, Technology, Engineering curriculum frameworks and their resources and materials. This also will require some professional development. Some of the standards have changed considerably. And there is currently a science curriculum committee working under the leadership of Assistant Superintendent Pruitt to come up with a possible program, which is hopeful that we'll be able to implement the program next year. Certainly, we can put that up if we have to, but then we're delaying the fact that children are still not using these standards and the social studies standards were just accepted. So that's coming next. So if we either take a two-year approach to adding this, right now, the budget has a one year. In adding this, grades K to six, grade K to five. If we take a two-year approach, we're going to be behind in social studies. If we don't do anything, we'll be even more behind in science and social studies.
I have a question.
Yes.
So you say they're behind on social studies and science. Are they, it sounds like they're not currently being taught this material that they need to be taught, more than take these tests, do well in tests.
Well, the teachers currently don't have the proper resources for it. So they're literally running around on their own, trying to find resources, materials. Many of them use teachers pay teachers and they use their own money to buy resources. It's not consistent across the district. They have to now work on their coordinated units, but they don't yet have a program in order to do those units. So they're ready to work on this. They're doing them in mathematics and ELA, but they don't currently have the program to use as the basis for all of their curriculum units.
What grades is the program covering?
K to five.
So we should expect a five to eight-year delta between this and it showing up in these scores?
We're definitely expecting to see a jump in grades and scores once the children, once the teachers have the proper resources and education to help the children. Yes. The longer we wait, we don't have the program yet. This isn't our proposed budget.
Right.
One more question on that. You're talking about these as either new standards or pending standards?
Yes.
Not meeting those standards? Is that going to set jeopardy of having a corrective action point of any type or any...
No, it is possible. We are held accountable. Right now, the science is still only in grades five, eight, and 10, or nine, nine, 10, depends on which district, but it counts for grade 10. It is a competency determination. So when these students are in grade 10, they will need to pass that test in order to graduate. That's the competency. Then mitigating our facility failures and we've had some issues of non-compliance, as I've mentioned at meetings before. The Department of Education has given us corrective action in areas for things like special education areas in the pre-k to buildings, saying that they weren't sufficient. We have tried to do the best that we can with the spaces we have. It requires things like walls and we don't have them. It requires spaces that we don't have. It requires square footage that we don't have. So we have moved classrooms around. It restricts our programming because if we have certain services happening in a room, we can't use it for anything else. Here are some of the issues we've been having in our K to two buildings. They do have, it's well known that they have asbestos in them. It is the only thing that we can say that we solidly work on proactively. We're not going to reactively fix a breach in any facility that has an issue with asbestos. So it is the one area where if it comes close to being breached in any way, we take care of it. But that's been getting more and more costly each year. And because there is a pending school building project, we've been doing patches. The patches have been checked by certified staff. The state does come in and they certify that it is a patch and that it is acceptable, but they will not last forever. They are not long-term fixes because we don't want to invest hundreds of thousands of dollars into the pre-K to two buildings and potentially have a new building. However, if we don't have, which you'll see in another slide, if we don't have the option of having a building anymore, we will obviously have to make those long-term fixes. You can see the rest of the items. In terms of the building project, the current three buildings do not meet the current educational plan. They don't meet the minimum footprints that the state requires for things like class sizes. There are no computer science labs. There aren't musical art rooms. The nurses' offices don't have toilets or sinks for franking privacy. There are traffic problems, lots of issues that many of you are aware of just from around the buildings. The base repair cost, as said previously, for the three buildings is estimated to be $86.5 million. This is not a figure that we came up with by any stretch. I need to emphasize that Doran Whittier in 2014 did some exhaustive research of all three buildings and came up with a figure. And then most recently this year, Perkins Ziesman, who's the designer for this potential project, came up with a figure. And when they calculated the escalation in costs, they found that they were almost identical. So we've had two validating, two figures that have validated one another on the cost of repairing these three schools. As also said previously, this does not correct things like the walls missing from the special education space or offices that are currently in closets that are creating some air quality problems because it wasn't meant to have people in them, for example. In terms of the new building, we do have a current 52.26% reimbursement rate of eligible costs, which as Jackie Weisand said, could be in the ballpark once you take out the ineligible costs of around 40, 40-something percent, which is a great deal of money. Obviously, if it's a hundred, if it's a $100 million project, that's still reimbursement of 40 and that would be a brand-new building for all three of these, fixing all the programmatic changes, all operational wastes at this time, some broken seals and installation pain and so forth.
So Dr. Rob, I'll just, so just to put a point on it, the, if the MSBA project does not proceed, then we still have to address these facilities in a meaningful way in terms of repairs and renovations?
Certainly repairs. It gets very tricky with the repairs because you really can't chip away at certain things. Once you trigger, I believe it's 30% of the cost, the value of the building, then all of your compliance issues come into play, ADA compliance, seismic compliance, fire suppression systems, and those have to be done in that project. So that's several hundreds of thousands, millions of dollars. Aside from the fact that we want our buildings to be ADA compliant for all of our friends. We want it to have appropriate fire suppression systems. You can't, we can't chip away at it each year because they add up each year and it can't go over 30% over several years.
So with those incremental costs to accommodate that compliance, is that even in the 86 or that would be above and beyond that?
This has some incremental costs, assuming that the town's not going to in one year pay $86 million. So it has the incremental costs in terms of one building and then another and then another that is worked into this.
So important for the, it highlights the importance of the project. In your example, if it was $100 million and 40% of it was reimbursed, the town cost would be $60 million. Whereas if we don't do that, our cost is obviously magnitude more than that. So it's a huge opportunity.
And also is it, sorry, is it fair to say so not moving forward in the MSBA project, we would need to spend more money to basically, say we spent $86 million, we would end up with three...
Nineteen 50s buildings.
Mid-century, mid-20th century, right, post-World War II era schools for 86. That's right, for more money significantly than it would cost to get modern, state-of-the-art facility.
According to our experts who have done all these figures, yeah. And just to, a final note on this, people have asked me about the MSBA process. We have a certain number of days in each module. Right now, our module ends shortly after town meeting in November. If the town does not support a ballot vote for a debt exclusion override and if the ballot doesn't pass, because obviously both have to go through, then we are withdrawn from the MSBA process. That means we have to put in a statement of interest again for all three schools every year. It took us eight years to be accepted for one school this time around. And I will say, having been involved in this before in other districts, I used to work in a district that had 100-year-old schools. It all depends on who the competition is in a particular year. So you could send in the same application 10 years in a row and maybe get accepted once, maybe get accepted twice. It just depends who else is in need in a particular year. Remember Bridgewater had literally a roof collapse that went right to the head of the line, things like that that may be unexpected. Also, if we were, even if we were accepted the very next year, which MSBA has invested a lot of resources and time. We have gone up to that building in Boston many, many times. The board has met with us frequently. We have liaison, expert liaison to help us through this process because it's very stringent. They are not anxious to work with the town again that they feel is not interested in pursuing. They have invested a lot of time and money in the last two years into the town. So that's understandable. They don't want to force anything on the town that just doesn't have the appetite for this type of project at this time. However, if we were accepted the very next year, you have to start the process all over again. you have to start the process all over again. So we would have to hire an owner's project manager again. We would have to hire a designer again. All of the tests that have been done on the land would have to be done again. All of the valuations, the traffic study, that would all need to be done again. And that is what we're spending the one million dollar appropriation on right now. That would have to be done again. None of that is applicable to a new project, especially if they chose another building this time around. But even if it's the same building, you have to start over again. Finally, is, uh, some reading issues. This is actually more an indicator of our, our society at this time, actually. And if you have children, you've probably seen this maybe even near our homes. According to the Children's Reading Foundation and many other research agencies, they find that, uh, that a huge indicator of student success further in their career is if they, if ninety percent of the students in grade three, if the ninety percent reading goal by the end of grade three. So a school district should have ninety percent of their third graders reading by the end of grade three in June. That is a huge predictor of future success in school and certainly after that. As of January, so this isn't June because obviously we're not at the end of the school year. But as of January in Easton, forty-three percent of our grade three students were reading below grade level according to our, um, benchmark system, which is the B A S. The reason I say this is a societal issue is the teaching has not declined in quality in any way, and there's nothing wrong with our children. However, as someone who has taught reading before to adults as well, this is, this is something that is affected by our current, um, society's dependence on technology. As you may remember yourself, or, or maybe when you had small children, many of us read to our children at night. Uh, but we read out of a book, even reading out of a Kindle or an electronic device. Typically, that's not something you share with your child. Having the connection between sound and print or letter and letter sound is very important to a child who's developing that competency. Homes today don't tend to be as print-rich environments as they were in the past. Very few places have newspapers hanging around the house. Very few students will pick up the comics on a Sunday because parents now are largely reading these on an electronic device. Magazines are, are very rare indeed. They're typically on an electronic device as well. Go to a dentist's office or a doctor's office where my children used to pick up Highlights magazine or, or flyers or read signs. It's either video games or there's a scrolling sign, an electronic sign, which is very, it's very different than reading print for a child. So there are a lot of things that are challenging our educators more than ever before. They're coming into school less prepared than they were with less background information, and teachers are having to backfill all of that information. So it's part of the challenge that we're having. And so we're working to add some resources to help those children catch up in those early years. And that's in the form, as I said, in the form of these reading interventionists. So those were the reactive needs. Now proactive, I'll just give you one example of proactive because we're not in this budget, but just to give you an idea of what proactive means. These are things, again, that are, um, something that we feel strongly is coming. And we are recommending that we prepare. For example, full-day free kindergarten. I know you can't see this map clearly. However, if you just move your eyes from left to right, especially if you pick where Easton is, right in the center there, and you move from left to right, one thing you see is that the, the chart from two thousand, I actually shared that in this room in two thousand fourteen, fifteen. And, um, the one on the right is two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. All of the communities in the Commonwealth that offer free full-day kindergarten have no color on them. Um, right now, there are two hundred and ninety-three communities that offer full free-day kindergarten to all of their citizens. The other colors, the darkest is the highest tuition charge. Easton is in the darkest tuition. What you can see, and I have all of these between that two thousand fourteen and two thousand nineteen, what you can see is those darker colors getting lighter and diminishing. And when I talk to my colleagues across the state, they're, they're doing the same thing. They see that it's coming, and so, um, and by coming, a tipping point in Massachusetts where there's a mandate for full free-day kindergarten. And so they are, and, and the importance of having full free-day kindergarten for their children. They are, um, reducing tuitions five, six, seven years in a row and slowly incorporating it into the budget. So that's why those darker number, darker colors are turning lighter and then disappearing altogether. If you look at the communities that still have some color there, Dutzberg, Situick, Concord, Easton, they are communities that the, the state at some point is going to see that the quote-unquote higher need, high-poverty communities are not represented. And we are predicting that at that point, they're going to say, now it's mandatory. That would represent, in one year, that would be a seven to eight hundred thousand dollar increase. Um, when you see our numbers, you're going to see that that would be impossible for us without decimating the rest of the general education budget. We recommend, in a pro, if we were in a proactive budget, we would recommend one hundred to one hundred forty thousand dollars a year of reducing tuitions to move to the point of fully incorporating all those employees into our operating budget. This shows, again, seventeen communities, including Easton. This is kindergarten enrollment. What I did here was I chose the operating audit, uh, the town's operating audit cohort members. And then I just added what the Department of Education uses. It's called the dark comparison. And then I just added, I think, three very close neighbors geographically, Sharon, Norton, and Foxborough, I believe. Out of those seventeen communities, you can see all the ones on the right that have free full-day kindergarten. So taking it from the state perspective and making it more regional. Out of all seventeen of these, Easton has the least amount of students in full free-day kindergarten, uh, excuse me, in full tuition kindergarten. The rest of the students are in half-day kindergarten. The reason that this is significant is because all of the children to the right of us are being prepared sooner and better, our professionals, than our children are. Eighty-eight point five percent of ours. We're lower than Redding, which is a, actually a level-three district. All the others, Sharon is a level-one. The rest are level-two districts. Easton is a level-two district. Walpole is actually working toward it. They reduced their tuition this year. And then we're, you can see we're even far lower than the state. I did a study as an assistant superintendent here where, and I talked about it in this room, actually, where I followed longitudinally our students, just in Easton, and just the ones that stayed. We have a low transience rate, but I still weed out any students that may have left the district and moved out of it. And of our children who were in full and half-day kindergarten, I followed them up until third grade, including the first M-CAS test, which was in third grade. One hundred percent of the students who were in full-day kindergarten outperformed one hundred percent of the half-day students on one hundred percent of the indicators that I used. I used twelve different indicators. There was not one exception. So in terms of fiscally, we talk about those, those students that require more services and more support as they get older. These are the children that are going to be even more expensive to educate as they get older in addition to being prepared, um, less soon and less well than their peers in their neighboring districts. So again, that's an example of something that we believe is coming. We believe we shouldn't have it anyway, but the fact that it may become a mandate makes it a proactive need. And then strategic, I'll even be more brief about this. But just to give you an idea of what strategic means, another proposal before our legislatures right now is actually changing the start times. If you remember, two years ago, Easton did start times only by twenty minutes. We weren't able to do more because we have a three-tier bus system. And in order to do a, a larger switch, we had to go to a two-tier bus system, which was going to cost about three hundred thousand dollars. So we just shifted everybody later by about twenty minutes. That works great for the high school and middle school students. It is not working well for the elementary students. We're finding that they are very fatigued at the end of the day. Biologically, it's not best for them. We wanted to actually switch them, but it, it would have required a two-tier system. But there is a lot of discussion about this in, um, with our legislators right now. And they're talking about a mandatory eight-thirty or no, uh, sooner than eight-thirty start for high school students. The research has been clear that that is best for their developing bodies and minds and that in earlier times, best for elementary students. We've done surveys on the transportation time changes, and it is very clear that the parents and the teachers find that this is not the best situation for our elementary kiddos. It is where we find ourselves right now. That would be a strategic change, is to invest in this tiered system so that we can make the appropriate start times again before it becomes a mandate, but also because it's really best for kids. Another example is specials for elementary schools. Again, these are specials that our neighboring districts have for their, for their children. Foreign languages, that starts in kindergarten in a lot of districts, right, right open center, starts in elementary school. Social emotional learning, again, proactively. And technology, really using the computer, those elementary beginnings of using a computer, saving a file, copying and pasting. And advanced learning program. We don't have a true advanced learning program in the district. We, we should. Statistically speaking, five percent of our students are going to be advanced learners, and we don't have an appropriate program for them right now. I have four-year plan because, just like the kindergarten, that would be phased in over several years. But again, that is strategic, and we're not, that's not where we are right now. And then you have innovative and regressive. Just as a reminder, regressive is, we are finding ourselves there right now. I will start sharing the numbers. Before I do that, though, do you have any questions?
Andrew, what was the last time we were out of reactive?
Well, I've only started defining it as reactive in the last two years. We've never been out of reactive. Uh, before that vote, I've, I've been here six years. Marilyn's been here longer. Uh, I can't say that we've added anything strategic at all unless we've cut, you know, we do, we don't always have to add. We can shift and change, and sometimes we do some of those costly things. But the things on this list, we haven't done any of them, which is why you're on the list.
So at least for six years, we've been in reactive mode?
At least twenty-six years. Any other questions? So there are going to be a lot of figures on here. I really don't expect you to see them all. I'm going to circle the bottom line on all of them. You can go back and look at them if, if you'd like. But it's really just to show you the, the work that went into this and, and what has been included, just so that you know to the level things have been included. But before, um, I talk about the budget this year, I just want to point out again, we are having a lot of cuts this year. And I, and we have been getting several questions. Why, why all of a sudden? Why are we cutting all of a sudden? But really, this isn't all of a sudden. We've been cutting slowly each year. Last year was particularly difficult. Uh, we outsourced some drivers. We had to switch our, our platform in the schools to Google platform. We've also developed some revenue generators. However, we don't really have the facilities to generate a lot of revenue. So wherever we can, we're literally renting out two classrooms right now. But it, it's providing us with twenty-four thousand dollars a year. The special education programs that we've put in place, that, uh, has the potential, we've said many times, has the potential of being, uh, revenue sources for us. Tuitioning students in is a lot better because, uh, for, for neighboring districts because they're paying the transportation costs. So it's less expensive. Our special education programs are largely new. We've put them in in the last four years. But we do have one that's running very well right now at the high school, and we have students tuitioning in to that. We're hoping to expand that to other programs. For example, at the middle school and high school right, uh, the middle school in Richardson Olmsted this year, we removed the teachers that ran the skills program, uh, which is a special education program at those two schools because we didn't have any students in them. However, if it had been an established program going on for several years, it was only two years old at the time, and we had, didn't have to move those teachers to follow the students where they did go, we would have kept teachers in there and tuitioned students in. One student would pay for the tuition of the teacher in the program. Another student would pay for the paraprofessional in the program. You have three other students, and now you're actually generating revenue. And then those students move on so that when that cohort moves from Richardson Olmsted to the middle school, if we didn't have any in the cohort in Richardson Olmsted, we probably don't have any in the middle school. So you can keep those kids all the way through, uh, to graduation. So that is a possibility, but we have, we don't have a program everywhere yet because we're just moving people around at this point and so we can afford to have it in all schools. We also did things, of course, like raise the activities fees and raise the athletic fees. That program at Oliver Ames, for example, right now, is generating one hundred and ten thousand dollars a year for tuitioning in three students. So this is the beginning of the budget. This is what we're kind of calling level service. This isn't very discretionary. This is taking the FY nineteen budget, which was forty-one point three million dollars, then the staff rollover. That includes all contractual obligations. Uh, the maintenance, that actually was way higher. We had to cut that down. But that's simply some mitigation of issues at the K two schools. Our legal and transportation contracts, uh, they do go up incrementally every year. And then out-of-district tuition. Again, that out-of-district tuition is extremely hard to predict. That could be one child. So it is, I believe it or not, a conservative figure, but it's as close as we are comfortable bringing it. And that brings us to forty-two point six million dollars. So while there is a current placeholder of four percent in the budget, we know that that, we're not being offered four percent. We understand that is still an over a one-million-dollar deficit. When we started the budget process, it was a two-point-seven-five percent, and there still was a deficit. So we tried to, very hard to stay close to the two-point-seven-five percent. But what you can see here is just rolling over our expenses from last year results in a three-point-two-zero percent increase. So then I'm going back to those reactive needs we talked about. And those are represented here with an estimated cost. We looked at this as a leadership team and realized we can't do all of this. So we reduced, uh, almost all of them. We kept the three that I showed you slides on because we showed that they were priorities. Right in the center, you see the adjustment counselor, the reading, and the elementary science. Everything else we either cut or reduced significantly. That still did not bring us where we need, we knew we needed to be, to be fiscally responsible and do our part in the town. So then we went into our current operating budget, and these are all the cuts we made to our current operating budget. This is the page that puts us in a regressive, uh, a regressive target. This includes technology. Instead of having a proactive replacement plan, now when a smart board or a printer or parts are used for computer, we will order them. And then people will wait until we have them, and then they will be fixed. We eliminated a grade-four teacher position. We eliminated a grade-one teaching position. We eliminated a high school English teacher position. And we eliminated a grade-six teacher position. These will all obviously affect class sizes. We eliminated two library assistant positions, one at the middle school, one at the elementary, uh, one at the high school. Library and office clerks had days before and after school to prepare the school for teachers and students. We're proposing eliminating those days. We cut the O A and E M S supply budgets each by ten percent. We had overages at the middle school in Oliver Ames. That means in order to keep class sizes down in the contract, it is, there is, uh, an option to have a teacher give up a preparatory period and teach an extra class. We have to pay them for that extra class, of course, but it keeps us from hiring a new person. We have to get rid of all of those overages. So those will also affect class sizes. We have one remaining driver, um, from the outsourcing that we did. We're going to send that driver to a custodial position in one of our buildings. We're gonna send that driver to a custodial position in one of our buildings. We're also, we also have an open custodian position in the evening at Parkview that a long-term sub is in right now. We're gonna reduce that to a point seven. We had reduced the point seven at Center School, but we're going to wait on that and see how the point seven goes at Parkview. We need to make sure that the school is ready and operational each day. And if that is possible, then we will make that change next year. Speech and language, we've looked at all of the caseloads and we are predicting less service hours required. Again, if any needs arise or students move into the district, that would need to be increased again. Central office, we reduced costs and, and materials in central office. And we are, we don't have a number on this yet, but for substitutes, we are going to limit substitutes for certain roles. Certainly not classroom teachers, but secretaries, clerical aides, reading specialists, certain paraprofessionals, certain learning specialists, special education teachers. With the rollover, the additions we felt were critical that were cut down. And these cuts, it actually comes to a forty-eight thousand nine hundred dollar decrease overall of the rollover cost. So total increase of, I don't know if you can see it, three point zero eight three percent. That is what I have proposed to the school committee and that's the figure that they're voting on Thursday. Just for comparison, if we were to do the next level, which would be the reactive and the proactive budget, that would be a total of six point three percent increase. If we were to do the strategic level, that would be an increase of nine point four. Just to, and this is the handout that you're receiving right now. I did put regressive in red because regressive typically goes on the bottom of that. I just wanted to make it clear we are regressive, but I put the level on the bottom so you could see it for uh, comparison purposes. And just to give some context to this, we have been talking about this. This was mentioned in the presentation earlier this evening about the per pupil expenditure. This is apples to apples, this is, this is grainy smith to grainy smith. This is the uh, metric used across the Commonwealth. It doesn't matter the size of the school or where it is. This is what each school spends on each child to educate them. This includes your chapter seventy state reimbursement. This includes entitlement grants, other competitive grants and town contribution. Easton is fourth from the right. This is the same seventeen con groups that I used in the prior slides. You can see where the state average is. So Easton is uh, just over thirteen thousand dollars per student. The state is almost sixteen thousand dollars per student. If we were to make the state average, that would be an additional eight point three million dollars. So again, just to give context, the Easton Public Schools is operating at the level that it's operating right now with eight point three million dollars less per year than the state average. But the state average is far to the right, so I just chose another district that's more toward the center, just late left of the midline. If we just looked at Walpole, for example, if we had the same per pupil spending as Walpole, that would mean an extra five point four million dollars per year for the Easton Public Schools. And just as a point of reference, our strategic is three point eight nine million. So we would be able to satisfy a lot of our reactive needs, our proactive needs and some of our strategic needs. And maybe even push into innovation if we had the same per pupil spending as even one of our neighbors, Walpole.
Quick question for you, sorry to jump in. So just jumping back really quick, you're saying that what is, is that what we're paying as a town or that's the total number?
It's the total number, including the town.
And everything.
Contribution, state reimbursement and grants. It's thirteen thousand four hundred and thirty-three per pupil. Easton is fifteen thousand forty-nine dollars per pupil.
Out of curiosity, so Walpole, Walpole. So what, what is, do we know the number as a town that we are doing per pupil versus what they're per town ignoring all the other stuff? I'm just curious.
Town.
Oh, the town's contribution?
Yeah, what's the town's contribution per pupil? What's the breakdown? Do we have the, I'm just curious.
It changes a little bit.
Are you even taking out state aid?
Yeah. Well, just because of the, I'm, I'm questioning what the, what the funding difference is. So just town alone, what we're paying versus other towns alone, what they're paying, are we at par? Are we way below or we, I don't know, you know what I mean? Like where, where we fall, just considering that.
With just tax.
Yeah, just our, what our town spends per pupil, what we're putting in.
We pull up.
I'm only having, I'm having.
I understand, yeah.
Were you sure?
I understand the question.
Yeah, I think I understand it now.
It does get a little more complicated than that because there are things included and you can't just, it's like, there are things in, that are not included in per pupil, like transportation, they take that out. So we have to say, well, how much of the state aid is actually, you know, how much of the tax money is going to us for transportation?
In reference, Connor, what was, what's the percentage of revenues that are state aid?
Well, yes, assuming it's fair to take chapter seventy divided by enrollment, is that?
Okay.
So. Yeah, I mean, well, that's, that's one form of state revenue. You add reimbursements.
There's others too, that's why I'm wondering.
But I think in the bigger picture, if we root back question of what's important is that the largest contributor of state aid, we talked about state aid a lot in this kind of broad brush. State aid is composed of a variety of different accounts, but the largest of which is chapter seventy education uh, revenue. And that is an account that in the governor's twenty twenty budget is projected to go up by zero point seven percent. So that's one of the things that's driving structural revenue gap that puts so much tremendous pressure on the town and therefore the schools every single year is that that state revenue uh, is just not growing, not even at inflation. This is, as I was pointing out earlier, this is an account overall that took eight years just to get back to where it was in two thousand and eight. So that's, that puts a tremendous amount of pressure. For comparison, that chapter seventy, which is, I want the educational experts to speak to what its legislative intent is, but it's just over ten million dollars to Easton. The budget for the public schools is over forty. And as the superintendent's demonstrated, when you aggregate that, Easton's budget is not only not excessive, it's extraordinarily lean. So even with an extraordinarily lean budget, less than a quarter of that is being paid by the state. Is that fair to say?
Yes, and negligible federally. The federal government doesn't fund other than through some grants, most that we don't call it that work.
And to point out as well, uh, the more, the higher the median income of the community, the less the state aid you get. So it's, you know, it gets a tough comparison to me versus other communities because if you live in a neighboring community, the median income is less when they get more.
They get more funding, that's what I was trying to figure out, is that they're getting more funding or that.
Uh, well, no, so, right, the foundation budget, which feeds chapter seventy, is extremely complex. So for example, Connor made a very fair comment. Can we just divide it by the number of students? Well, if you're just talking about state aid, you really can't because there are eleven different indicators. Every student has sort of a little price on them. A kindergarten student, the state says is different than a high school student, which is different than a special education student, which is different than an English language learner, which is, they're all, they all have a different price. So it totally depends what the makeup of your town is. However, the foundation budget formula itself is critically flawed. And so we have been working with our state legislators in that area very hard. Mass, or the Mass Association of School Superintendents just testified at the um, at the State House on this topic. So there are many issues with it. First of all, just the cost of special education has been, become exorbitant and the cost that they have on the child has not grown. So that's very grossly underrated. Same for healthcare. So the cost of educating a student includes administration, includes healthcare, includes, and that has not grown, even though healthcare clearly has, has grown a great deal. These are the things that we are really asking our legislators to advocate for changing. First, the foundation formula. Second, we do get a, what's called a circuit breaker reimbursement. Last year, it was seventy-two percent. This year, they're talking about making it sixty-five percent. That would be a significant cut for us to absorb. Circuit breaker is those out of district placements I talked about. Uh, if, if a child's education on a district was one hundred thousand dollars, the first about forty, it's sometimes forty, forty-two, forty-four thousand, the district is responsible for it. So the rest of it is reimbursable by seventy, it's supposed to be seventy-five percent when it's fully funded. Last year it was seventy-two percent and now they're talking about sixty-five percent. If it costs forty-five thousand to educate a child, we only get reimbursement on one thousand. If it costs a hundred thousand, we get reimbursement on the top percentage, fifty-six thousand. Uh, we don't get reimbursement on the first forty whatever thousand depending on the year. And it doesn't include transportation. So another thing we're asking is that that includes transportation costs. Because right now that's over and above. So none of these things are included and your town has to pick up a lot of that. These entitlement grants, we are, the, the foundation at least is per pupil. The foundation, uh, excuse me, the entitlement grants, you have to have a base number of students in a category. So for example, we were talking again in this room about the great amount of money we were losing in some of our grants. Because Easton fell below the five percent threshold of poverty. We were literally four point nine percent. So that meant we didn't qualify for two of the three parts of the Title I grant anymore. So we don't have access to that money. So we still have that four point nine percent of students that even the state acknowledges are more expensive to educate, but we don't have the entitlement grants to help educate them. So there are a lot of flaws in the system and we're working on the legislative side to, to try to remediate some of those things. They're a lot, a lot slower moving than.
What is the outlook on the legislative side? Cause it seems like this is a trend.
There are three competing bills right now on the foundation budget, one from the House, one from the Senate and one from the governor. Uh, and I don't know which will emerge, to be honest with you. Not all of them help districts like Easton. So some of them are very heavy on low income and will help more of the urban centers who receive the entitlement, entitlement grants.
What I was alluding to earlier, the more, after the community, the less, the less you get.
We're in this middle spot and I just, I've described that to our legislators. We're in this middle spot between um, not having the appropriate founding from the, uh, funding from the foundation budget and not, and having some of the highest taxes in the state for the taxpayers. So for them to fill in the rest is difficult. And then not being, um, not qualifying for multiple entitlement grants. So again, we have an increasing number of English language learners, but we don't have the forty percent that's required for a lot of the grants. But we do have these students that are more costly to educate without the resources.
Dr. Cabral, one of the takeaways that, that I have from this analysis is, like your opinion on this, is that there really isn't really silver bullet sort of metric that we can use where we say, it's expenditure per pupil, it's, it's uh, title seventy, uh, chapters of, I'm sorry, uh, funding that is one thing or another. But what we can say from your analysis of regress, reactive, right, et cetera, is that right now with the money that we have, we are not delivering to our, our students the kind of education that you and the, the school committee and our educators believe that they should have. Number one, and that when we look at any of the metrics that we're putting forward, we are underspending. And then when we go to the next level, we can see that the money that we're getting from the Commonwealth and the federal government is decreasing. And we see that uh, overall, based on the, the, these conversations we have with budget subcommittee before, that, that the funding is less. We have less money, excuse me, we have less money available uh, as a structural revenue deficit than uh, we ought to have. I, I don't mean to diminish the question because I think it's, it's an important and insightful analysis. But that the analyses that you provided here have the message, we are not spending enough on our students to achieve what we believe, or excuse me, what you believe as a professional they ought to have, is that a fair?
What I know they can do and it's my understanding right now that the residents of Easton want for their children.
Thank you.
I think everyone who has a child in school right now should write a letter or hug their teacher or administrator tomorrow. Because the level of education they are getting with the resources that they're provided right now is exceptional.
A great, a point which shouldn't be lost in this discussion.
Do any of the cuts from making affect the compliance issues that we have? And also any of those cuts dipping into the potential revenue sources that we've already tried to get by from the special education?
They are not affecting the revenue, the couple of revenue sources we have in place right now. We are limping along with our compliance issues. We've tried to explain to the state that we are in the pipeline for a project, for example. And we're hoping that they will accept that. If we don't get a new building, of course, that changes the conversation.
Dr. Cabral, you mentioned mental health and locally at state level and at the national level, it's a diminishing issue. What would you professionals start to put your finger on in terms of, it's so systemic, there must be some things. Cause it's a huge cost and you must see a training, what, what's causing that?
It's very, it's a very complex answer. I don't think any of us know exactly what all of the factors are and there are confounding factors and many variables. Certainly, technology has gotten ahead of us, even in education. In terms of the capacity of the educators to teach children how to use it responsibly and well and with responsible limits, that is something that is difficult to keep up with for educators, never mind parents. I don't think that's the only problem, of course, but I will, I'll share one anecdote if I might. I recently was in a business, okay, hairdresser. And so I was there for a long time. And I watched a young mom come in with her toddler. I mean toddler. In fact, she put the toddler on a stool as soon as she got in the salon. And I was even a little worried about the child's capacity to sit in the stool. But I took off my teacher hat and just watched. And immediately put a mobile device in the child's hands. And it validated for me, which I already knew, uh, you know, we have an issue with kids not developing some real core skills that we then see missing in school. For example, being inquisitive, being curious, expanding their vocabulary by saying mommy, what's that? Or dad, what is this? Having that interaction to know when to take turns in talking, things that simple. We're teaching in school now before they're able to access the curriculum. And all the things that I'm sure you, you've seen when you're at a restaurant or the hairdresser or somewhere else in terms of a child missing out on what previously would have been skills that they would have had a strong understanding of when they entered school. But then something happened that I didn't anticipate, kind of brought a new level of awareness to me. And that was when the child lost interest in the device. And I realized just how unprepared the young mother was too. And I remember the days of coming up with things to keep my children busy, whether it was stacking the jellies at a restaurant or making a little path with the sugar packets or what have you. In this case, maybe having her make a towel out of rollers. The mom was so lost for strategies. I could see that she was really struggling and she honestly did not know what to do with her child. And then I realized it was even a bigger issue in terms of education. That we need to support the families and the new parents just as much. Because they're raising children in a much different environment where the kids are not developing the skills, the parents aren't developing the skills either. So that's one small example that we're seeing. And we're finding that we're doing a lot more support at home for parents, for caregivers, for providers. Because they're trying to us. Because the network outside of schools is grossly lacking. And the mental health system and support services are few and far between. And the ones that do exist with the healthcare that people have is making it very tricky for them to access. And the ones that do exist with the healthcare that people have is making it very tricky for them to access. So we become more of a resource than ever before for a lot of these parents. Whether it's technology, uh, works into the opioid crisis. There's been a very overprotective culture where children are having a lot of difficulty navigating problems on their own. A mom, I would jump in front of a train for my kids. But what we are seeing, again, that development of parenting skills is a lack of wanting to see discomfort in our kids. And that results in a lot of breakdowns at school, in school. It results in a lack of self-confidence, lack of ability to work through problems and be strategic problem solvers. And I don't think it's dramatic to say for our young twenty-somethings going away from home for the first time who find themselves without that level of support, turning to things like self-medication and contributing to the opioid crisis that we have now. So it's very complex and I, I don't think there's a quick fix. You mentioned a silver bullet, there isn't one. What we're doing right now is purely reactive because we weren't ready to handle this sort of change in our society.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? That was a very valid comment about our society today. Very concerning. Any other questions, Dr. Cabral?
In fact, I'd just say thank you, Dr. Cabral, for concluding me on all the meetings we had earlier and kind of teach me the intricacies and ever-evolving changes that happen in the budget process this year.
Thank you for spending your time on those issues as well.
I also just wanted to recognize the school committee that's here tonight. Uh, thanks for coming out and being a part of it and make sure that, you know, you get a thank you for all the work that you do and approach all the educators at home as well.
Dr. Cabral, what would you say is the single largest financial opportunity at highs before the schools, in your opinion? As we talk about budgets in the short term?
Well, as I said, we're working really hard at the legislative level, but that's not any kind of a quick fix. Uh, what we see as the opportunity for the district right now is the building project. It's kind of a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. We feel that it wouldn't only help us with our current facility needs, but we foresee operational, uh, operation costs decreasing that could actually have long-term effects for our budget going forward.
When's the next listening session or opportunity to engage on that for the community?
April fourth.
Eleven. No, isn't it the eleven? I think it's April eleven. April eleven. At all, at- At Olivera High School. Olivera High School Cafeteria. April eleventh, Olivera High School Cafeteria. I will say, there's also a website that is kept up to date with all of the information. It literally has recordings of every meeting that we've had, all of our handout reports and so forth. It's eastonebesproject.com, B E S for Early Elementary School. And we're out and about trying to spread information, factual information as much as possible to residents. And we, I certainly invite anyone to either call our offices or email me or my assistant, Monsuza. And we're happy to provide any information that we can give on that project. It's a very complex process, you understand it, and you want to make sure everybody has the information they need to make the decision that works for them.
Excellent. If you haven't had the chance to go to one of the sessions, I would highly encourage you to go.
Absolutely.
And I would challenge you to find five fellow neighbors in the town of Easton and get them to go. Um, and try to spread the word about, uh, what's been identified as the single largest opportunity from a financial perspective. It's that important and it's that informative. There's a lot to it to try to understand and be able to help the town.
We've had many, many meetings and they, they haven't unfortunately been well attended.
It's a great opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cabral. That concludes the budget discussion.
All right, everybody, this is how we'll close your lines. So we'll all be back together again on Wednesday. Appreciate you part of this time, appreciate Dr. Cabral, the school committee's time. I think it's important to remember in the context of the budget subpage presentation that started tonight's meeting, the departments of budgets, we'll take a look at thus far. On Wednesday night, you're going to hear from the remainder of the budgets, Southeastern Regional School, the rest of the town departments, including our larger departments, police, fire, DPW. Where you'll hear a similar refrain about some of these major challenges that we're all facing as a community. Just a point of clarification, the remaining one million thirty-one thousand dollar budget deficit includes a reduction from that placeholder of four percent to the very difficult, harder and three point oh eight of schools. So there is still a million to go. These are preliminary budgets. As Tom, I think you said earlier, we, we have no option but to produce a balanced budget, we will. But it is, uh, after years of kind of cutting the margins and trying to preserve services as much as we can, it gets harder every single year, so we'll keep working together and we'll be back on Wednesday.
Appreciate that, Connor. I think, uh, if I could just add, I think the themes we're going to hear are going to continue. It's going to be a two thousand and five, you know, Ford Ranger. It's going to be challenged capital leads. It's going to be challenging decisions that, you know, I guess the, the opinion is you cut bone instead of cutting muscle. But it feels like a challenging, uh, has, has been, I think, for several years.
Thank you to our friends in the finance committee. We'll see you again on Wednesday night.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Oh, there's one note conserving printing. Please bring this. Uh, on Wednesday, we do not have access.
Okay, we'll move back into our agenda items. Next on the list is a memo from Kristen Kennedy regarding the inspector of animals appointment. Each spring, the town of Easton is asked to nominate an individual or individuals to serve as animal inspector. Jordan Holbrook serves the town in this capacity as part of the job of the animal control officer. Once nominated by the Board of Selectmen, Miss Holbrook will need to accept the nomination and the paperwork will need to be sent to the state in reaction to the appointment. Position of animal health points of municipal animal inspector for each and every city and town in the Commonwealth. The primary duty of the animal inspector has become rabies control and the domestic animal population. Municipal animal inspectors are also responsible for barn inspections and may be called to assist with domestic animal disease quarantines in the event of an outbreak. I'd like to have a motion. Any questions about this on the board? I'd like to have a motion to accept Kristen Kennedy's recommendation for Jordan Holbrook to serve as the animal inspector.
So moved.
Second. Any comments, questions, all in favor? unanimous? Thank you. We also have now a execution of a memorandum of understanding with Brian J. McGoughlin for an acquisitive sewer district easement and treatment capacity.
So, uh, attached for your consideration in your packet, there's a memo of understanding between the town and Brian McGoughlin related to some private easements shared between Mr. McGoughlin at six forty-six and six fifty Washington, that's D'Angelo's and Dean Oil, uh, with his across-the-street neighbor, six sixty-one Washington Street LLC, there is Plaza, which recently had a special apartment submitted to the planning and zoning board for a major redevelopment. That looks quite exciting. This, there's a few different pieces moving here. But what this MOU is, uh, it stipulates that this consideration for that private easement agreement between those two parties, it's a private agreement that the town is not party to. But nonetheless recognizes the importance of, it's an agreement that would allow the owner of Curious Plaza to put a sewer pipe from his property through, uh, under Route thirty-eight through D'Angelo's Plaza North Water to connect it to the town's sewer section. Uh, so in recognition of the benefit of that, this is an MOU from the town to McGoughlin, who has granted the privacy zone, Shafra, full chart. Uh, that, that basically, uh, says that the town will provide McGoughlin notices of the available sewer treatment capacity, increase it on an ongoing basis. And should, through privileging that in the future, that capacity start to be limited, we will notify McGoughlin and say you have ninety ways to connect to the sewer and pay a full privilege fee minus any sort of in-hind benefit of the commissioners at that time in the future determine or we will take this. So it doesn't cost the town anything, it's a unit approved by town council. It's consistent with your rules and regulations as sewer commissioners related to the assessment of privileges. It facilitates and supports that necessary private easement agreement, which will make possible the redevelopment of Curious Plaza, which is consistent with the town's master plan and recently completed food state commercial district strategic development plans. This, this checks a ton of boxes in good way. So we've been working on this for a while. I recognize that you will be asking some questions.
Do you have any comments or questions, Dr. Cabral, or anything?
No, I just expressed the appreciation for all parties involved working through this complex opportunity. And I think it appears resolving it, uh, I think for the good of all involved. So it's appreciated.
So can I have a motion to approve the MOU between Mr. McGoughlin and the six sixty-one Washington Street LLC?
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I asked that motion to revise. It's a, the memo, memo understated between the town and McGoughlin. He does have an agreement of six sixty-one, but that's outside of our agreement.
So now we have a motion to approve the MOU with Mr. McGoughlin.
Correct. Awesome. So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? unanimous?
Thank you.
Okay, annual town meetings warrant review.
Thank you. So we have a few articles for your consideration tonight. Uh, obviously, financial articles are still pending given the, the projected budget deficit that we're still working through. That includes the capital budget, which is still pending resolution of that operating budget deficit. Uh, in April, you'll have zoning and CPA articles, also DIP article for you. So tonight, uh, not a tremendous amount of articles. So we'll go through them in order as presented. Article fourteen, the board actually voted on at your last meeting. We've actually revised the article, however, so I would ask that you consider voting to recommend again if you're so willing. Initially, this article was to rescind one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars of borrowing authorization from last town meeting. People Northeastern Village, uh, carbon filter replacement. That was something DPW Director Dave Beal alluded to. We were fortunate to secure state funding for that. The borrowing is not necessary, so that was already voted to be recommended. Uh, however, one of the requests in the fiscal two thousand and twenty capital budgets is a generator for this building. Broadway and Hall is occasionally used as a heating shelter during extreme weather events. We do not have a generator here. Uh, you may recall, last town meeting, the capital budget included one hundred and fifty thousand dollars in borrowing authorization for two generators, uh, at the DPW, or one at DPW, one at FIRE. That was actually accomplished for less than what we were authorized to borrow, uh, sixty thousand dollars less. So the idea is to, uh, have this article not only rescind the one hundred and twenty-five thousand for the Northeastville Treatment Plant that we will no longer need, but to also rescind sixty thousand of that one hundred and fifty and use that borrowing capacity to purchase a third generator for less than what we initially thought it would cost for two. So again, you voted this specific numbered article before, but we did add that sixty thousand dollar decision. So I would ask if you were, you would take a motion to, uh, recommend it again.
Okay, so the motion would be to rescind sixty thousand?
Uh, no, well, the motion would just be to vote to recommend the article as presented.
And I have a motion to recommend the art, article as amended. So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you. Uh, Article sixteen, I will ask the superintendent to join us.
It's been so long.
Again, Superintendent Shafra, Mayor Burden, Prime Minister Director. We currently do not have many of our school buildings or our administrative offices. And so, as you know, we rent space in, at fifty All of the Street office. That is set to expire on June thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen. So as has been done for however many years the department has been there, the school department followed the chapter thirty B procurement regulations and worked closely with Town Council Sarah Fumino on our paint contract terms. We received one bid and so we would like to award the office spaces of units to WQ Builders, which is where we currently are. Release amounts over three years. Typically, the increases are two to two and a half percent. The first year for us is a six point five percent increase and then two point four and two point seven. However, in the first year, one of the conversations we did have with the district community is the fact that we do not currently have any security measures in place. We have gone through our school buildings and, and put in place some security that includes glass replacement and cameras. We're not looking to that extent, of course, but we are looking for some minimum levels of security which was unmedable to add to the property. The extent of the contract, basically, unless I can answer any questions?
What was the last term?
Three years.
They're all three?
My knowledge, they've all been three years.
I don't have any further comments or questions. I will note in the second line that acting in coordination with ETH instead of Board of Selectmen in the warrant article, just in case it's catched up.
Is there a dollar figure assigned to this at this point or not?
Currently, it's eighty-three thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars a year. Year one is set for eighty-nine thousand seven hundred and forty-nine dollars, which is the six percent increase. Year two is ninety-one thousand ninety-eight thirty-eight dollars. And year three is ninety-four thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars.
So, Connor, that will be included in, in the warrant article comes?
No, that's in the school's ongoing budget. It's a recurring expenditure for them to, to lease that office space because it's- It's a recurring expenditure for them to lease that office space, because it's, the superintendent noted, they do not own any, they don't have room for any.
It does include all the heat, like just the snow removal parking spaces, trash cleaning, and so forth. So that would be accepted for cost.
So can I have a motion to recommend, and include and recommend?
Yes.
Article 16.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you so much.
Article 21.
For Article 21, we knew that this would be a long night, so the next two articles have been submitted by some of the Board of Selectmen committees. We did not ask that they come, because it was difficult to try and plan out the time. This has come up with these abruptly pretty much housekeeping items. Article 21 is to see if the town will vote to reduce the number of agricultural commission members from seven to five, by relying on the law. So we're aware some boards are appointed in accordance to state laws, and some are appointed in accordance to the charges. Some are appointed in accordance to bylaws about that at town meeting. The board has numerous times in my tenure revised charges as business practices have changed. And this is something that's been requested by the Agricultural Commission. The only change would be to reduce the number of members from seven to five.
And the rationale behind was that they were having difficulty with quorum, with the seven members? Is that correct?
I believe that is what they reported, yes.
I'm making a motion to include and recommend Article 21, Agricultural Commission composition.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Article 22.
Article 22 is again submitted by one of the select and appointed committees. This is the Commission on Disability. Article 19, at May 2007's Annual Town Meeting, established a commission on disability. I believe at that point it was five, and they are asking to go the other direction. They would like there to be seven. So you're retaining the same amount of committee people across the board. So that's it.
All appointed by the Board of Selectmen? There's no changes?
In the appointment. No changes to the appointment, just the number of folks on the board.
Any questions about that, Kelly?
None.
Motion to include and recommend Article 22.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous. Article 23. Amendment to the Easton Home Rule Charter.
So I ask for this to be included and submitted by the Board of Selectmen. Article 23 is an amendment to the Easton Home Rule Charter and Easton Town Code to replace all gendered references to the Board of Selectmen with Select Board. This is to see if the town will vote to petition a general court of commonwealth of Massachusetts to amend the Easton Home Rule Charter, and see if the town will vote to amend the Easton general bylaws to replace all gendered references to Board of Selectmen with Select Board or take any other relative thereto. So this is really an article that seeks to update the terminology only and not change any powers or duties of the board. And the reason why I ask this, as we all know, we have heard this from many towns across Massachusetts who have made this change, and I applaud them for their leadership in this area, because I really believe that this is an opportunity for us as a board in terms of including and recommending, but also as a town and a community, to really make a statement. I think that statement is that it does matter in terms of how we address ourselves and how we address this body, in terms of the language that people hear, in terms of the message that that language says, which by this change, I believe it sends, indicates a message of inclusion, of respect for diversity. And I think those values are very important, not only to us as a membership and group, but also to the community as a whole. I believe we live in a society where there is a tremendous amount of examples on a daily basis of reasons to be different and reasons to be in a negative way. And I believe that, much like our town's commitment to execute a social media policy that said that there were certain behaviors and statements that would be unacceptable, I believe that this is also another opportunity to positively engage our community and let people know that Easton stands for, as a town, a community that is inclusive, that respects diversity. And I think that this is one voice that can support that.
That's very well spoken, Tom. Anybody have any comments or questions or concerns? I have a motion to include and recommend Article 23.
I feel I just want to add that, thinking about this, that I certainly have no objection to this, that we don't, we don't talk about other boards as the finance committee men or the planning men, and so I think that this will equalize the way people look at our board. Let's put my topic.
So I assume that you're seconding the motion?
I am.
The town.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. General Minutes dated 3/11, I assume people have had a chance to review them. Any questions, comments, amendments?
None.
Motion to accept General Minutes dated 3/11/2019.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous. And that concludes the business for this evening.
All of this.
Any public participation? Any press notes? Connor, do you have any? Nothing to add? Okay, I'd like to take a motion to adjourn until Wednesday.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.